Turn it on and on. Is it working now? Okay. If we could call the planning commission meeting to order and please call the roll.
Commissioner Bach?
Here.
Commissioner Chorin?
Here.
Commissioner Hawley?
Here.
Commissioner Baca?
Here.
Alderman Stroelcheck?
Here.
Mayor Worth?
Here. We have a quorum. We may have one or two people join us. We're not sure where they are. The first item on the agenda is the city of Mequon gateway promenade. And, oh, I, thanks. The first item is approval of the minutes from November 11th. Do we have a motion?
We have approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we go to the gateway promenade. Ms. Talleson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. The city is bringing back forward the gateway feature for the intersection of Mequon Road and Cedarburg Road. The project was bid twice since last year in November when the planning commission originally approved it, and it came in quite a bit over the expected budget. Since that time, members of the Mequon-Thievesville Gateway Committee as well as a subset of fundraisers have been working hard to adjust the plans in order to fit this within the budget. The project is being supplemented by funds from both the Village of Thievesville and the city of Mequon through TIF funding. However, the bulk of the project costs are being raised through a private fundraising effort. So the changes that you see before you are modifications from the original plan approved by the planning commission. The changes include essentially the rear portion of the circle of the feature and what was a second level that allowed an elevated platform or walkway. All of the staircases then were removed from the project as well. What you're seeing now is essentially the semicircle and the walkways all being at grade. We still have the interior features with some seating. The interior wall still has an opportunity for plaques and some information on the history of the area. The street-facing view has not changed at all, so the project team did a good job of keeping the design, the original design intact in terms of the types of amenities that it has and the ability of use. And there was no change to the overall height or the placement of that front facade or the signage as part of it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address them. Members of both the gateway committee and individuals of the community who have been out fundraising are available to answer any questions or address the commission tonight as well as Growth Design, which was the original designer of the project.
Thank you. First, any questions? Connie Pukay is here and registered to possibly speak in support, but only if there are concerns that are questions to be answered. So... Well, now, you just told me the opposite.
I changed my mind.
We like to change our minds.
Sorry. The only reason I would like to speak to it is because I'd also like to say that we worked hard. The Thievesville-Mequon Rotary Foundation has now taken the responsibility of this project. And when we discovered that the cost was with the elevated walk area was going to be too expensive to accommodate, we still had donors to satisfy. We still wanted to build something that the city wanted to see there. We had a design that many people had already expressed appreciation for. We also wanted to do something that was a little less impactful on the site and yet, at the same time, access that site for people from the community. In creating this design, Growth Design worked with us. Peter Damsgard is the architect. We widened that walkway somewhat. We've created a wall, a stone wall, that people will be able to sit on. We will be landscaping this area to really make it very park-like. We've also proposed in this site plan a stone or a small gravel walkway down, sloping down to the River Walk. The River Walk is still accessible to handicapped individuals with the existing walkway, the existing River Walk way. But we have worked really hard to make this a design that will satisfy all the different people who have spoken to us about this. Neighbors were concerned with the original proposal. They thought the elevated walkway in the rear would be offensive to the people across the river. That is eliminated for not only that reason, but because it was so very expensive. We hope you like the new design, and we'll approve it tonight.
Questions before we have a motion and comments? Anybody? Mr. Chorin?
Well, first of all, I want to compliment you on what you've done inside the curve. I really like what was done there, the landscaping, all the materials back there. I've got a couple of concerns. My understanding is that the height of the promenade did not change when the second level of walkway was eliminated. So it's still, as I believe, 17 feet tall.
I'm going to let Peter respond to those specific questions.
You're correct on the height, yes. That's two feet below the street. So it's, from the street level, it's a 15-foot structure.
Okay. I personally still think it's a bit tall. I like the materials. I'm wondering why we need three Mequon-Thievesville signs, you know? One that I understand really faces, for the most part, south, one at the corner, and then an independent monument sign. Why do we need three elements to announce that this is Mequon-Thievesville?
Really, it's to create visibility from all points of the intersection. That's not a square intersection. The one to the right you see coming from the south, the large logo, which I think also creates a focal point, is visible from the other two directions. The monument sign there is in an effort to retain the existing digital display that's on the site, and so repositioning that so that it's not directly in the front of this structure.
I've got, it seems, excuse me, but it seems a little ostentatious. I mean, I know we want to, and we should be proud of Mequon and have a nice element there, but it just seems a little bit over the top.
Other questions? Ms. Schaefer?
I just had a question on the lighting, because I remember that was a point that a lot of the neighbors across the river had raised the last time this came before us. So I don't know that anything is, I don't know if anything's changed with the lighting, but I think that the neighbors perhaps were concerned that there was going to be more lighting than there is. So I know on page 42 of the packet, excuse me, it described the lighting, and it looks like it's all either, I don't know what you call it, focus lighting? I can't get mine to come up all of a sudden because I wanted to refer to it, like to spotlight the signs or the lighting that kind of goes, like, lighting the pathway, but there's nothing that's a...
Uplighting?
Yes, thank you, uplighting. There's nothing that's like a standalone street lamp type light in this area, is there? Am I just missing it on the...
There is a light at the intersection. That's still the standardized, but that's existing.
Not changing.
Okay. But I think the rest is really, you know, for safety and aesthetic purposes.
And when we talked last about the lights to be, I remember talking about for safety and talking about hours and would they be lit all night, and I can't remember if we landed on, what we landed on for that. I don't think it's enough light to be worried about it polluting across the river. Is that correct?
Yeah, it will not. I don't recall if there were limitations on the hours.
I recall discussing it. I don't recall whether we actually voted to add something like that. I don't think we did.
It sounds like there was, it sounds like there was not a condition.
Yeah. And I don't think it's enough light to be throwing so much that it would be invasive across the river.
Other questions? Mr. Baca?
So what is the new budgeted cost? Kim?
We're looking at about $700,000.
Okay. And what is the allocation with respect to donors versus the city?
We already have about $300,000 committed to this. We have another $150,000 or so to raise, but with the city's $150,000 and the, and Thievesville's $50,000, we're almost there. We suspended fundraising this year because there was so much in question. When it, when the bids, the city bids came back in too high, we just stopped at that particular point. In August, when the council leased the site to the TM Rotary Foundation, we began then working on the plan and seeing what we could do to adjust that, to adjust the cost, to respond to some of the issues that had come up. Having done that, we're, with an approval here and an approval of a development agreement with the city, we're, we'll be ready to start up fundraising again, and we have no doubt that we'll, we'll meet that need.
Well, I congratulate you and the community in terms of putting a lot of money and effort into this, so thank you very much.
Well, the foundation board is here, and they're the ones behind it, so...
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Baca?
I think, I think it, I think it looks terrific, too. Have the donors had a chance to see the renderings? And I'm assuming given some feedback or positive response from the renderings?
We continue to take the renderings around to all of our donors. I can't say that all the people who have already donated have seen these plans, but what they liked about it was, especially the view from, from the street, and we've not altered that.
Yeah, very nice. I have one question. You mentioned a gravel path coming down from the gateway to the River Walk. Are those, is that on the plans? I, you know, our copy of the plan is so small, it's hard to see.
Sure. I think on the rendering, you'll see, you'll see it. I can almost see it here, but we'd probably have to turn off the lights. But it's essentially, it's right, it comes off of this, this area in here and wraps around, kind of hugs those trees.
On the next page in the plan, you can see it as well, Kim?
No.
Oh, okay, great. Yep, here's, here's the site plan. So it comes off that most northern edge of that circle, right off the end there, and then wraps, and so you saw a cluster of trees right in here, so wraps around that cluster of trees, and then there's some other additional landscaping, I think, back in here that you wrapped around, and then it connects to the sidewalk that's down by the river's edge.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I had a question.
What a question?
Yep. So my one concern is like just nighttime safety. You know, it's dark at 4:00 PM, and if people wanted to just walk over and see the donor wall or wanted to go over and, you know, just go into the space and take a picture or something like that, and they're just curious to see what was around the corner. I'm seeing that we've got rope lighting and downlighting behind that wall. I agree with what Commissioner Schaefer says. We don't want to interfere with the neighbors across the street and have it lit up like a, you know, like a beacon in the middle of the city, but we do want to make sure that we have some level of safety. Can you talk to about where some of those, that lighting's going to be? Is there going to be enough in there that it's just not going to feel like a dark space where somebody would want to sit?
Yeah, there, there will be one-foot candle that'll meet your ADA safety for walkways. That's different than, I think, your perceived dark safety. Those lights will be placed, don't quote me on the number, but I believe there are about four of them as you walk in the structure along that back wall. So they, we're actively lighting the darkest, most, the laser pointers there. We're lighting the dark corner, if you will, with the lights. That's where they're concentrated, so safety will, won't be an issue.
And I got a comment for later, so I'll save it. Okay, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments? Alderman Stroelcheck?
So again, thank you for all the hard work. I know that this has been, to say nothing short of a process to get from point A to point B.
I think I've turned white.
Me, too.
I'm going bald, so we're kind of, we're on the same page here. This, this changed a little bit from where it was in a little bit of the park interactivity, and I'm going to be just very genuine in the fact that I support this. I always have. I will continue to do so, but what I envision for this space is a space where we have a few more benches, people could actually sit and just relax. You know, we've got the joy and the beauty of the river. We're dropping $700,000 on a community fundraising effort right at the river to draw attention to the city, but again, to have this be a little, maybe a little more usable space where we've got like just even a little more of a balcony off the back. If there's something that we might be open to altering that isn't going to just blow the budget, did that come up in discussion? Is there something that maybe we can do?
Yeah, we've been conscious of that through the process. What isn't necessarily shown is at the ends, there's certainly an opportunity for a bench and overlook. There's no railing or anything in front of you. There'd be an 18-inch-high wall that rings that whole inner, inner circle, which is the appropriate height for a bench, and it'll have a smooth cap on it, so you can feel like you'll be able to sit. Kim, can you?
Yeah, let me see if I can get to one of the images that shows the interior of the space.
So that, that wall there is the appropriate bench height and will run all the way around the interior as a, as a spot for people to rest and converse. That walkway is also eight or so feet wide, which is plenty of room to put a bench and still have room to walk. I would envision two movable benches at the end of the ring overlooking the river to get back to what that observation deck was in the previous iteration.
Sounds like a Boyceville project. Any other comments? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bach?
Aye.
Commissioner Becky Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Jim Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Baca?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawley?
Aye.
Commissioner Chorin?
I re-lect it now.
Alderman Stroelcheck?
Aye.
And Mayor Worth?
Aye.
Vote passes seven-one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Lakeside Development. Lakeside seeking a sign waiver approval to allow for an off-premise sign for the residents at Foxtown at 6213 Mequon Road. Welcome, gentlemen. I'll have you introduce yourselves in a minute, but first, if Papua can give us a brief...
Sure, thanks, Mayor. So the applicant is proposing a development sign for the residents of Foxtown. It will be placed at 6213, which is at the intersection of Mequon Road and Weston Drive. An off-premise sign requires a sign waiver approval from the planning commission. The development sign does meet the 32-square-foot size requirement. They are proposing a seven-foot sign, but staff is recommending that they reduce it to meet the six-foot height requirement. As far as how long the sign will be on the site, the applicant has indicated that they would like to keep the sign up until all lots are sold, and staff is okay with that. However, since construction has not started yet on the project, staff is recommending that the sign not be placed until construction documents are approved, and then they would be allowed to be up until all lots are sold. Staff does support the sign at the location due to this property being hidden behind other developments in Foxtown. There also are not other opportunities to place the sign along Weston Drive. Staff is recommending that the sign be embedded into the ground and that the landscaping at the base be properly maintained, and the applicant has provided an image showing that the posts will be in the ground. He showed you an example tonight, and with that, staff does recommend approval of the sign based upon the conditions in the report.
Thank you, Mr. Zapchak. And if you want to introduce your colleague to us?
I'm Tom Zapchak with Lakeside Development. This is Timothy Van Harpen. Tim is our construction manager for the infrastructure at Foxtown. So I, I just want to make a comment that I talked with staff, obviously, prior to recommendation, but I, this weekend, I was driving around the city looking at some signage, and I asked Robin if she would give you a picture of the sign that I saw on a project on Highland and, Highland and?
Green Bay.
Green Bay, I'm sorry. And I was really taken back, and the reason why I'm taken back is it seems like there's so many inconsistencies here where that sign is, if you look at the left, the right-hand side, it's probably more than eight feet high, and there's no landscaping, and it's twice the size of the sign that is recommended by staff. And I just, I don't understand why there's such an inconsistency, whether this developer is a very fine developer, has gone to staff and received the variance, or, you know, what the deal is. And if that's the case, then maybe I should appeal to have the same type of sign. Because, you know, this project is set way back from Mequon Road. I think you all know where it's located, and I think we need not only advertising, obviously, but directional information for people that, you know, want to find out where the site is. So I don't know, if somebody, maybe staff can explain why this particular development is deviated from what's required by Lakeside, I would like to hear that.
Sure, we can address that. So development signs are permitted by code without a sign permit. So when individuals call, we give them the requirements. It can be up to 32 square feet and no higher than six feet in height. Other than that, they're allowed to put up the construction sign or real estate sign until lots are sold or until construction is complete. In this case, they obviously are not conforming to the code, and enforcement action can be taken, but the requirements that we are recommending and that are listed in the report are what's allowed and required by code.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission? Alderman Stroelcheck?
What are the rules on, like, larger developments with how many signs that they get up against the street and things like that? I mean, I know when I've driven by a couple things, I mean, there's been like a chain link fence, and there's been multiple, you know, three-to-six-foot signs that have been up, you know, all bordering the property, and I'm just curious to see really what the difference is between this whole project as a whole that was approved on a PUD basis and singling out the residential part of it and saying that it's off-site, because, I mean, the whole site is approved with the PUD. The whole site came together with construction and expectations. I kind of view this as an onsite sign, you know, to the...
Well, it's not on the Foxtown property at all.
This is a, this is a different, this is owned by someone other than any of the entities associated with Foxtown.
Okay.
So obviously, I mean, obviously, of course, taking advantage of a high-profile location, right, at, at the intersection with a portion of the Foxtown development that's not on a major thoroughfare. And that off-premise sign is allowed per planning commission approval through a waiver to address Mr. Zapchak's question about why is there a different standard here? Part of it is because it's an off-premise sign, part of it's because it's on a major thoroughfare, and part of it's because we expect it to be up for quite a bit of time.
But also, this isn't a conforming sign.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see that one.
We just got this this evening along with you guys, so this is the first time we're seeing it, but to me, it looks like it exceeds 32 square feet and six feet in height.
Yes, I would agree.
Sure it does. Um... I have a question, if I may. Hold on. A follow-up to what Alderman Stroelcheck was asking. True construction signs are, you know, the ones they put on the chain link fence are allowed pursuant to state law, correct?
Correct. That was a change in state legislature. So when we see the chain link fences, construction fences up now that are peppered with kind of the nylon signs that you might see in an outfield of a baseball field, we have no local zoning or sign code authority over those anymore.
So he can put those up on his chain link fence under state code saying who the builder is and who the architect is and what have you, and despite the fact that we'd prefer to be able to regulate that, to some degree, we can't. This kind of sign, the advertising sign, is different, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the distinction between some of what you're saying. Now, Mr. Zapchak?
The comment that this project is going to take longer to complete than the one where the sign is that I gave you, I don't, I don't know where that comes from because they have 26 units, we have 23 single-family homes, so quite honestly, I think we'll sell out our project prior to the other one, but I'm an optimistic person. Maybe would, would planning commission be opposed to me putting up a chain link fence on that property if the owner is amenable to that, and then I could put whatever I want on it?
No, it's a chain link fence around the construction site is what state law provides for. Questions from the commission? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve per staff's comments?
Second.
Any comments? Any amendments? Hearing none, if we could call the roll, please.
Commissioner Baca?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawley?
Aye.
Commissioner Chorin?
Aye.
Commissioner Bach?
Aye.
Commissioner Becky Schaefer?
Aye.
Commissioner Jim Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderman Stroelcheck?
Aye.
Mayor Worth?
Aye.
Vote passes eight to zero.
The next item is still a residents of Foxtown issue. This is seeking development agreement amendment for the proposed 23-family, single-home development on Weston Drive. I assume that Mr. Zader is going to lead us in this discussion.
Sure. So this original development agreement was approved back in June, and it mirrored our standard development agreement, which doesn't allow anything to occur on the site in terms of building construction until...
I don't know that I've ever asked this before, but for whatever reason, you're really loud, so maybe pull it just a little bit back. I'm usually yelling at people just the opposite, but...
It's always the opposite.
Back up, son.
I guess I don't need the microphone. So back in June when this was approved, it had all our typical standard development agreement language in it. The applicant, if you do, as you may recall, asked for additional lots to be, spec lots to be, to be constructed prior to that final plan approval. The commission did not go along with that and kept it at the two. The, the current standard in our typical DA requires that the base asphalt course and all other, all other improvements are installed prior to them starting any type of spec development. The applicant is now requesting to have six homes started prior to the installation of the binder course, which would basically be just a stone base. We had a number of conversations with the developer to try to better understand how this is going to be built in terms of phasing, and these are very tight lots, so staff and the developer basically agreed on most things other than the number of homes that we were allowing. So basically, I had the, the screen up of the development, so this would be the entrance way off of Weston Drive. So the way the development agreement reads now, the applicant will start on Lot 1 and work to the east with the development, and we're allowing the sidewalk on this location as well as this location and this location and then down here and here. and then down here and here not to be installed until after construction's completed. So basically, the thought was that this would have, eventually would have the final course down, and the applicant would come through this way and then work as this construction site basically this way and then work its way back through the lots. And when that was done, the same thing here, start on one end and work back. That way, the sidewalk and all the infrastructure on this side of the road and this side of the road, as well as this side of the road, and then same down here, would be installed prior to construction of most of the homes. The concern was originally that the applicant was looking forward to have not any of the sidewalk installed. But staff, including the engineering department, was concerned that putting sidewalks in one lot at a time would result in uneven and maybe a discoloration in terms of how it would look. So we wanted, we preferred all the sidewalk to be installed at the same time. So by having this method of construction coming around to the back and then working this way, basically protects all the infrastructure from being damaged during construction as best as we can. The biggest difference in terms of requests is the applicant would like to start six dwellings, and staff is recommending two dwellings be allowed to be started. That is our typical standard. We did allow a few more for the Hoff project on Green Bay Road. That was due to some environmental contamination of the soils which he was excavating. And he actually didn't even start all six of the units, he just did basically four. So with that, that's our only...
Explain why the contamination of soils would make any difference.
He would have to dig out the contaminated soils and then basically fill them back in with dirt. And then when he was building, take it back out again to build the foundation. So he wanted to remove the soils and then start the foundations at the time when there was no soil in. So we allowed a deviation for that one to go up to six. But in this case, we feel that there is an opportunity for two to get started, put the stone base down. And then once he gets final plat again, he's not installing all of the infrastructure. That would allow him to continue with the other units in the development and then slowly work his way either for this block this way or this block this way. So it's a very... We've always had a conservative approach in terms of what we allow to be built on prior to final plat.
And can you explain why?
Well, in most cases, it's usually not an issue. But there are times, especially with the Great Recession, a lot of communities had issues with subdivisions that have failed, letter of credit that we require to be posted wasn't enough to cover the roads that were not completed. And then they ended up basically special assessing the properties already that have purchased the home, additional money to put in the roads. That's an extreme example, but it could potentially happen. The other issue is we don't want to be in a situation where we have someone that, you know, sees the spec on Lot 3, falls in love with it, but can't get their occupancy because they're still not able to get the final plat. And then we get pressure from, you know, a homeowner who wants to move in and wants to move in that, you know, we can't allow it until we get the final plat approved. So the more the house is there, the bigger that opportunity could be in terms of pressuring us to get, you know, the process completed. And again, it's very, again, we're very conservative. We had another agenda item on for that Hoff property that was taken off for their final plat because of noncompliant issue with one of our requirements. And we just make sure that everything is done and buttoned up prior to issuing that final plat.
Thank you. Mr. Zapchak, my understanding is you're in agreement with everything except for the six homes. Is that correct?
Right.
And can you explain why that's important to you?
Can I please go back to the sign issue? If I understand it correctly, that the commission is supporting the recommendation of staff?
The commission passed the recommendation of staff.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make that clear. Yeah, there's a number of reasons why, you know, Jack's concerned about the economy. You know, we went through this before. We did the preserve, and we were in the middle of the recession. And we completed the project. It was difficult, but hey, we got through it. Who's to say what's going to happen with the economy? But apart from that, billing two houses, this is a very unique project. I mean, that's why we're here again, because the original development agreement really didn't address the issues that are relevant to this project, alleys and things of that nature. So we have to go through the whole process again, which is fine. But, you know, billing two buildings really doesn't demonstrate the essence of this neighborhood that we're creating. If you look at it... Bless you. If you look at it, we... It's entirely different project. We're creating a neighborhood. It's not like building one house in a subdivision. And with respect to the, you know, disturbance of the soil and so forth, we're talking... If you look at six lots, the lots are about 38 feet wide and 100 feet. So if you multiply that out by, it's less than a half an acre of land. If we would build one house in a subdivision with the same, you know, recommendation of having the stone base, it's less than two houses. So I don't understand what the issue is. The other thing is, if we would build six houses, we would put six sidewalks in when they're completed, as opposed to two and then whatever the market demands. And excavation is another thing. We would dig a hole that would accommodate six foundations. And then we would put six foundations in and then backfill with stone. It's just, like I said, this is not your typical subdivision. The other thing we have is we have agreements with contractors. You know, Lakeside doesn't do any... We hire subcontractors. And like carpenters, they're going to go right down the row. And it's very cost-effective to do it that way. You know, we anticipate the carpentry to take two and a half to three weeks. And then they'll go from one unit to the next unit. And the other thing is, if we start building in March, we'll have product available in the summer. If we have to wait until the final plat approval, we're talking about possibly, I don't know, depending on the weather, it could be June or July. Then we start building in July, then we have product on the market in January or December of the year. And that's not the hottest time for the real estate market. At that point, we may say, well, why don't we just wait until next year? You know, we did that at the preserve. It was postponed. And I'll tell you, it was postponed because the DNR... I'm sorry, DNR wanted to check for these snakes, these butler snakes. And they checked for a whole year and delayed our project. And when we started, it was just prior to the recession. And we were selling these houses, I mean, like, one, two, they were being sold before they're completed. So then we wait a year, we go into recession, last spec house sat there for three years. And, I mean, we're in a hot real estate market. You know, I would think that the city and the staff would want to work with a developer that wants to make this a successful project, you know, just like the sign. I don't understand. You know, that sign is located in a walk...
We're not going to rediscuss the sign.
I'm sorry, John. I mean, it's just, I don't know. So I think I have a number of good reasons why we could do six homes. And it's not going to affect anybody. So I guess I'll leave it up to you.
I would ask staff, because it was my understanding that staff's concern was that you couldn't do what you just suggested, and that's build, dig one foundation...
Well, I'm not sure. I don't know if you stated you would dig all six holes at the same time. I mean, the process was that you would come in through this way and dig one. And then you're going to have to be on two while you're digging one and putting the spoils on two until the foundation's in and backfilled. And then you would have to kind of do them sequentially. So I'm not sure how you would do all six at the same time. Because the point of this is, and the other comment about the sidewalk, these sidewalks will be installed. So we don't really want traffic coming in off from this direction. We want it to come in around this direction. So I think from staff's perspective, he'll be working basically on Lot 2 until Lot 1 has got a point where it's either decked or there's walls going up. And at that point, start Lot 2 in terms of digging the hole and working its way back. That seems to be the most likely scenario in terms of construction. And we are only talking, you know, a few months between when we believe that the stone base will be in, where it's adequate to start construction, to the point where final plat could be approved. Because again, we're not requiring all the improvements in prior to final plat like we typically do. So I believe we've been very flexible with regards to this project because of the uniqueness of it. So I think we've worked with the developer. But I think we still want to maintain some level of confidence in terms of making sure everything gets installed in due course. And again, this also brings up the issue of precedence. If we allow it here, then, you know, we're going to get the same request from the next developer that comes along. And yes, we all hope the economy stays the way it is. But I don't know if anybody has a crystal ball to be able to make sure that's the case. So again, this is a conservative approach, and it's been that way in Mequon for at least, you know, 25 years in how we operate with regard to subdivision development.
Mr. Zapchak, as far as Mr. Zader's understanding of how construction will occur, are you disagreeing with that?
No, I'll let Tim Van Harpen address that. But I would like to just comment that the comment was made to ensure all the utilities and so forth will be in. We're starting to put the infrastructure in this month. The plumbing, the, you know, the water and sewer will be in before we start. We already signed a contract with We Energies for the, you know, the gas and electric and whatever they do. And so that's not an issue. And again, I'll let Tim explain to you the rationale for the excavation of the six.
Well, it's really not a phased-in project. That term comes up, but it's, we're just doing the entire project. There's a couple sidewalks that were pointed out on the east and the west that can't be put in because we're only a couple of feet off of the foundation. As soon as the foundation's in, they can be put in. There's the minimal space between the houses. And all the material that's coming out of there will be exported, except for a little bit that'll be held onsite for backfilling between the homes as long as it's granular. There'll be no compacting between the homes because of the proximity to a long wall. So the way we look at it, it's really pretty much, the only phasing is that we wouldn't do all 23 homes at one time. Everything else will be done as quickly as we can get it done in the spring to get towards that final plat. But it's just so imperative to have more than, to have two buildings sitting there and then any more construction...
But can you address the construction issues that he was saying, as opposed to the two buildings sitting there? You know, I understand the marketing reason. I want to understand if you guys are talking over each other on how the process is going to work. If you guys don't have the same understanding, maybe this should come back to us next month on how the construction process is going to work. Because I don't want to approve an amendment that, again, we're to come back and talk about a further amendment. It doesn't sound like both sides understand how the construction is going to be sequenced. And I think that would be important to have before we finalize a development agreement. Not whether you do six or two, but how, if you were to do six, how it would work. Because staff is saying they think it's going to work somehow different than maybe what you're saying, or I'm not sure. But I want to make sure that both sides understand the practical nature of how this will occur.
I... Can you speak?
The question?
Yeah, I think there was a misunderstanding as to what the question is. And the, you know, we spent a lot of time working out all those details in the phasing. But our plan, if we get approval for six, is to dig one big hole. And I think this is what Jack is questioning. Dig one hole, export all the material out, set up the forms, put the foundation in for six units at one time, and then backfill. That's what, and that's the most cost-effective way to do it because the houses are so close. I mean, you're talking eight feet apart. And it just is, that's one of the... I was going to say mainly, it's not the main reason, but it's a good reason why it makes sense to do six.
And back to Mr. Zader.
Richard had a comment.
I actually had two. So if you're doing six foundations at once, how are you getting your concrete trucks in there? Since the foundations are so close to the sidewalk and the other foundations, how would you actually get your foundations poured if you're that close together?
Well, they would set up, they would set up the forms for each one and pour them and then remove them. I mean, in the same way that they're doing the Foxtown and Weston, Tom Neiman's project. They're doing, they...
So you would pump it?
Pardon me?
You would use pumping operations to get...
Well, I...
And I guess the question is more for Tim, as the construction guy.
In this case, it would probably be conveyed in. And they wouldn't necessarily set up all six foundations at one time. They might be two, and then pull those forms and pull them over. Yeah, it's very, we'll be able to get a conveyor right up to the foundation, so... But they just wouldn't set all six at one time. They would phase their way down. It would just make sense for us to excavate it all at one time. And we don't want to leave the material. Once we dig it out, we want to export it right away, except what we would use to backfill that little bit between the homes. So, you know, once, when the digger pulls it out of the ground, it'd be going on a truck for the most part.
This export hasn't come up before. And sorry for the back and forth here. When you say export, are you hauling it someplace else on Site F or are you hauling it off-site?
Off-site. Yeah, with our, the site is flat right now, and we'll have to overexcavate between the homes just because they're so tight. And because the material is granular, there's the opportunity to leave some of that material onsite for that small portion of black fill. But the entire excavation for the basement itself will be exported off-site at the time of excavation. I don't know where that has a lot of bearing on anything, but if it does do...
So where that has bearing, and I'm kind of looking back and forth between the groups, is we do have a requirement for over 1,000 cubic yards of fill needs to have approval by Planning Commission to be hauled off-site. And if each one of these lots is going to be fully excavated for the full basement and between the lots, that is going to be over 1,000 cubic yards. So we will be back before Planning Commission for a fill and excavation permit.
Well, that would have came up anyway, I take it.
Since nothing is going to happen until March, does it make sense for the two of you to have a further discussion to understand how this construction, how they're proposing the construction before we make a decision on whether it's two lots or six to make sure that the construction they're proposing, if they would get six, would work with the development agreement as written, as opposed to, or, you know, because I don't have a strong problem with increasing the number of homes. But what I would have a problem with would be having to amend this development agreement for the, whatever time it will be, because there's a disconnect between the communication between the parties on how that would work. And therefore, it didn't sound like you guys even understood how they were talking about doing it. I don't know what other impacts that would have on the development agreement. Or would it have none? And what other approvals they need?
So there would be some impacts on the approvals needed. The filling and excavating is not part of the development agreement. What may have some impacts is how they plan to stage their materials and whether or not the roadways could be actually open to traffic during their construction phases. So if they're doing one through six before the roadway is open and they're using that as their staging, that would have some impacts on the development agreement.
And I'm assuming you don't want to come back to us another time for another amendment to the development agreement if this development agreement as written doesn't work based on the way you plan to actually conduct construction? I'm assuming, Mr. Zapchak. I was saying that I assume that if the development... I was saying that I assume that if the development agreement as written doesn't allow you to do, if we would give you your six homes or four homes or something, it sounds like there may be some things that need to be addressed in the development agreement even to get there. Wouldn't it make more sense for you guys to come back to us in January, having had that discussion, so that both sides know how you would stage construction, so that it would be consistent with what the development agreement is requiring?
I, I understand where you're coming from. I don't necessarily agree because we, we've spent a lot of time on this. And, you know, what Bridget brought up is, is very true. If, if you're going to excavate a large area, then you have to get a special permit. Well, this is, again, this is unusual. Nothing has been done like this before in Mequon. So you've got to, you know, what, what's the, and again, I don't want to break the rules or anything, but what's the difference if we have a project and we're excavating more than what the code allows because of a unique project? I mean, right now, I think that's the only issue that came up. And I agree with you. I, I don't want to come back again if, if we're not in agreement. But, I mean, what can engineering tell me? Are there any other issues than having to come back for a permit to export whatever the 10,000 feet is?
So it's, anything more than a thousand cubic yards of material needs planning commission approval. Anything less than a thousand cubic yards is a staff approval item. So six lots would be greater than that thousand cubic yards without doing any major math or anything like that. It just seems like it'd be over a thousand. As for whether or not there'd be impacts to the development agreement, are you staging all of your materials on the roadway or are you staging them on the lots? And that question's for Tim. Are you staging all of the material for building the homes on the lots or on the roadway?
On the lot.
Well, no, it's.
And I don't know if it's.
No, I mean, like building materials, like your trusses, your wood materials, your blocks, anything that you need for the home construction. Are you going to be staging that on the roadway or are you staging that in the lot?
Depending on the kind of construction, it, it could be in the alley behind or in the garage area on the lot itself.
So with that answer, I would say that we probably should come back next month because that is contrary to what staff's understanding of the staging process would be.
Contrary to what the development agreement says?
There are not provisions in the development agreement of four staging materials on the roadway because materials are typically staged in the lot that they are being constructed on.
I don't think he said they would be on the roadway. I think he said they would be on the lot where the garage area would be.
He said the alley and that is roadway.
Would that include the alley?
Yeah, no, we really want to keep the alleys open because we're going for full construction in the main road, the center road. And when we're exporting anything or whatever, I really want to be using the alley, which would be the street to the north or the street to the south, for our trucking and other construction activities. So the sooner we can get rid of the material, doing six houses on that north, nine homes eliminates a lot of trucking in that process. And as we build the homes, we may be able to stay a lot ahead of ourselves with some of the material because we wouldn't be building all six. We'd build them, you know, one, two, three, four in that order. There'd be plenty of room, especially on that first six houses, to store all the construction materials on the north side of the lot itself, keeping the roadway open. And there could be an exception to that depending on something, but the trusses are all fairly short and it's not a real big lumber package, so. And we, we wouldn't be looking at stocking lumber for six homes at one time. It would be phased in, so.
Any other questions from other members of the commission? Ms. Schaefer?
Yeah. It sounds like you're having a meeting in the middle of the meeting, so I'm not sure that all of the details that need to be flushed out to, as the mayor said, that need to be flushed out to approve a development agreement are there. But my original comment before this discussion happened was more around the two versus six versus something else. So I appreciate your disruptive thinking in regards to this development because it is very unique and, and you said so yourself. And while you're naturally optimistic, I feel cautious about it and I have since the beginning because it is so unique. So I would say that that, to me, is more a reason to stick with the two because you may feel that the, that the market's going to gobble this up and I may feel very differently about that. And the only way that we'll be able to tell is once those two are available and people can kind of see, see you the way it's going to look. However, your point about the uniqueness and the ability to sort of visualize what the larger neighborhood is going to look like resonates with me. I wonder why it has to be six and why it couldn't be four because that will show, frankly, I think it's a, I think it's a drawback, but it will show the realistic nature of how close these homes are going to be in sort of the, the row nature of the houses. Is there a reason for the six versus the four?
Yeah, it's just gives a.
The economies of scale that you spoke about before with construction?
Not only that, but it, it gives a better perspective of what it's going to look like. It's, it's six out of 23. So I, I think that's important because as I said, we're creating a neighborhood and, and people really, you know, you, you can't look at a plan to, and, you know, we, we spent a lot of time researching this, going to other areas where there's projects are being developed and there's, you have to see. It's really, really cool when you see it completed. And again, two or, I mean, four would be better than two, but six would be better than four.
Are you, Tom, are you planning on putting, because you have the option to do attached versus detached garages. Do you plan on doing attached or detached for these lots?
I think the mayor, when we, we had some issue with detached. You know, if you recall, the town center zoning didn't even allow residents. And so we changed the code and then, I don't know whether they, we didn't allow detached or attached. And, and then staff came up with the idea that we would have 60%. Again, I forgot detached or attached. And, and John said, well, let the market dictate whether.
But they can't really dictate on spec homes, so can you answer his question?
Right. And, and in my judgment, they're all going to be attached because the price or the cost to attach the garage is like $15,000. So you're going to have an attachment that's going to be heated and cooled and actually there'll be space that you can have cabinetry in there and so forth. And it also affords an opportunity of having like a fence between each lot. So you're not going to be looking into your neighbors' backyard.
So if these are, so if these are all attached, the, almost the entire lot will be consumed with your pour because you're pouring your attached garage foundation along with the home. So then there won't be any availability on the lots themselves for staging because you're basically almost taking up the entire lot with your foundation.
No, there, there's a space in between the attachment and the next lot. And plus, Jack, if we did six of them, you still have three lot, vacant lots to the east that you can use as a staging area.
But you said you were going to dig them all out at the same time. And so you're going to have to, you're going to dig your attached garages at the same time because you're going to want to pour them.
No, I understand what you're saying. What I'm saying is if you have six of them, and as Tim said, we're not going to have all the, stage all the materials for six houses at one time. We, we build, put six foundations in. We have three lots to the east for staging. We bring the lumber in for the construction of the first house. It'll take two and a half to three weeks for construction and then we bring the materials in for the second house. I mean, it's, it doesn't seem that complicated to me.
You guys, I think we're getting really granular here with like what we're doing. I mean, if you've got houses that are eight feet apart, the economies of scale is going to be to dig multiple basements at once and not have to backfill and put a bobcat in and then put your gravel in in, in the middle of the homes. I mean, it, this, what the developer is asking for is probably best building practice from an economies of scale standpoint. I think with two houses, you don't get a feel for what the neighborhood is. You don't get a feel for what your, you don't have a house sandwiched in between two other houses so you can see what your neighbors are doing. And as we're like figuring out like that there's a, you know, a thousand feet of fill that's going to require a permit, I mean, it just seems really kind of logical that next month we could either put that as a quick agenda item. I don't know that there'd be much discussion on it or it might even hit consent. And it's, it's virtually a no discussion item unless somebody wants to pull it off and discuss it. If he wants to move fill from the property, I just, I, I have yet to object to one on planning commission yet unless it's been by a waterway. Now, this is town center. You have homes there. You're building homes, but you're building them in a really tight and compact thing that, you know, that hasn't been done in the city before. If you look at the apartments, the entire, for the entire apartment complex, for everything that's been built in the town center has been dug in one big hole. Why we can't allow a developer to build for six so that he gets some level of economies of scale in the, in the development project here, I don't think we're deviating from our standards. I think we're limiting it to only town center with residential ownership. So we have no opportunity for project creep and somebody, some other developer in some area coming forth and asking for something similar. I, I think, you know, what do we care how he's going to dig it and what it's, what it's going to go, except for the fact that we need to worry about where the soil gets excavated? And quite frankly, I don't mean to be rude, but if he's digging this many houses and we have a survey of the site and we have a plat for where he wants to go and there's the soil variance from what the hole's going to get dug to what's sitting there is, is different than the thousand cubic yards, this should have already been approved in, in a previous go-around. I'm fine with six. You know, I don't see an issue with six. You know, I like the fact that there's three left where he can put some spoils if he needs them there. He can stage construction stuff. And I think if staff worked with you versus put up a roadblock here on where to store the construction materials, I, I don't see it as being a huge issue. I mean, help me understand what, what the, you know, if this was in a condo, the whole thing would be dug at once. So what?
Well, again, we're not saying you couldn't do six. This is, we're saying we don't want him to do six before there's a binder course down. This is about digging the six and doing the construction when everything out there is just a gravel base. So that's the difference. I mean, we're not saying you couldn't do six at one time, but we're deviating from our standard of even, first of all, allowing someone to build with a gravel base to going to six with a gravel base. That's, that's what we're, what we're talking about here. It's not necessarily that, once he gets his final plat and he wants to dig all six, he can, there's nothing that would stop him from doing that. But this is related to the fact that there's a gravel base going to be down.
How many months of a delay is it going to be between when he's going to get the binder base down and when, you know, when he can actually lay it? I mean, you guys are worried about economy and everything else, so there's an election in November and it's, it's a political hotbed. You know, we're fortunate here that we're nonpartisan. I mean, but whichever way this goes, if I were sinking my money into development, I'd want six houses in the ground right now for the opportunity to have them sold for when I get my final plat. I can just, I can get rid of them and be on to the next thing, additional homes. I mean, from our ROI standpoint, from a business, this makes sense.
Well, I don't disagree. It makes sense, but it's, it makes sense for every other development that's going to come forward.
Hold on, one at a time.
Sorry. Could he pour and cap them?
No, he was answering your, your comment.
I think, yeah, from a developer's standpoint, it makes sense, but I think it's going to, it makes sense to every other developer to do the same thing. They're all going to want to dig as soon as they possibly can to get homes in and we're going to continue to get those requests. So if this is a change to our standard development agreement, then we can look at that change. But I think in the past, we've been pretty consistent with the way we've done things and we've, I think we have deviated. We've had several meetings with the developer and we, we came to this compromise and, and I think it was a good compromise. It's just we disagree on that number prior to, again, prior to the binder course going down.
I think if we're going to approve houses eight feet apart in any portion of the city, we should review our code. But this is the only thing that, like this, that has been proposed in the city. If something comes forward a little further in, in town center for the same thing, I would be speaking to the same level here. I mean.
Well, hold on. How is this different or the same as any other development? As far as the, the requirement for the development agreement, the require for the binder course?
Our typical development agreement would not allow anything to be constructed prior to final plat and everything installed except for two specs. And those specs could be started, well, one or two, depending on how many lots are in the subdivision. But for a subdivision this size, there'd be two. And those lots could not be started until at least the binder course is down.
And the reason for that is?
Well, fire protection, safety, access for inspectors, again, to ensure that the developer's actually putting in the infrastructure so that we don't get stuck if the economy turns. I mean, again, there was numerous communities that had issues with houses being constructed and in some cases occupied with a binder course or a stone base down where the letter credits were either not enough to cover them or the, the banks went under where that, they had to go then assess the homeowners to get those installed. Again, I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but that's the conservative approach that we've always taken in terms of development.
And the, this is 23 units, so effectively four sets of six. But could they put that binder course down from the beginning?
So the asphalt plants are only open for a certain portion of the year. Most of them are closed after Thanksgiving and then reopen whenever the frost and the snow and the weather allows for it in the spring. So once the frost is out, typically, once those plants open, you can get your binder course in and then shortly they're offered your surface course to finish off your development. We did work with the applicant on this particular development to kind of phase that binder course so that it wouldn't be affected by a lot of their construction practices and their phasing so that it is a little bit different. We did take another look at this and look at it from the phasing perspective of what could be done differently to allow them to get their final plat before their binder course is in. So that was where Jack was speaking to, that the base course, the gravel course, has to be in before they can start those either two or six spec homes. So it gives our inspectors a way to get there to actually do the, the foundation inspections. The public safety office, the police officers, the fire safety, they can access the site too. Basically, it allows people to get to the site who would otherwise need to.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is can, what? Can't he get his six homes built by getting the infrastructure in and getting final plat approved and then he can go ahead and do his six?
Correct.
So we're simply giving him a jumpstart on what we allow anybody else to do? Is that correct?
That would be correct.
That's not necessarily correct because the generic development agreement allows two spec homes to be built before the binder course is down, the stone base. The only thing we're asking is as opposed to two, we can do six. And as I stated earlier, the.
Why can't you get your binder course down? If you're, if this is going to take three weeks and three weeks and I, I'm trying to understand the problem here.
The problem, John, is.
Why you can't get six houses built fairly quickly early in the spring by putting your binder course down?
Because the binder, as Bridget stated, the asphalt plants are closed.
Sometime in April, right?
Well, no, this year, it was probably late May or June before they were able to put because of the, the rain that we had this spring. So think about it. If, if we have to wait, if we build two spec homes using the, the gravel or the stone base and then we have to wait until the binder course is in, well, we're talking, again, possibly late April, May. possibly late April, May, maybe even June. Who knows? It depends on the weather. So then we put the binder course in, which, you know, put the stone in binder course, that could be done in a couple of weeks. Then we start building. It, it's June or July that we, we start really building. And like I said, then the houses are completed in January of 2021. And I mean, it seems like a, a long time. And again, I, I complete, don't understand why, what the issue is with if you can build two and Jack says you're setting a precedent. You already set a precedent with that project up, that one that I referenced earlier. They, they allowed six units, three or two, three pads to be built before the binder course was on. So why would we be setting a precedent when they already set a precedent?
I agree with you there. Other people, other comments, questions? Alderman Strelcheck.
When does the road get dedicated to the city at what point?
Final plat.
These are private.
So the road's considered private until final plat?
No, they're, they're private. They're all, they're always a V private.
The easements are typically recorded at the time of final plat, allowing the public access to them.
So what's the issue with them storing in the alleyway? Building supplies during construction because nobody's going to access it for any other reason?
There aren't any provisions in the DA for how that is approached. What happens if the sidewalk is blocked, the curb is blocked, the roadway is blocked? We would typically handle that at a staff level if this was another development agreement and it came up during construction. We certainly could do that with this development as well. Just that the planning commission knows that that is not otherwise identified or there aren't any protections in this development agreement.
Is, is there opportunity? Because his big concern is getting the basements dug and final plat and, you know, just at least getting something in, the basements dug and capped. Is there an opportunity that we could allow him to dig and cap it? You know, cap the basements early?
Not sure you'd want to do that. That, I mean.
Okay, well, so we'll rule that out. And then I just, my final point, I guess, is that, you know, as you're talking about inspections, from the road, it's on the far side. If they had to walk across all the properties, it's 180 feet, which is about the width of a typical lot.
Are, are you talking about across site E?
Lots one through six are approximately 30 to 31 feet wide.
But if there's no roadway in for site E or site F, they're walking from Weston.
You're talking E and F. Can you talk in lot numbers? Because that's what I'm seeing.
So the directly west is in a mixed use building that's being constructed now. So it's under construction. There's no pavement there either. So our inspectors would be coming from that direction east towards the, the 23 lots of site F. So basically, they're beginning to be on gravel base all the way through. And we are allowed, let me back up a little bit. Our typical development agreement requires that the binder course be down before they start the spec homes. We did revise that, that the gravel base would be down before they start the spec homes. So we did make an amendment to our typical DA to allow for those two homes to start ahead of schedule. So the question is whether it's two or six.
I think we're splitting hairs over the phone.
Other, other questions? Okay, is there a motion somewhere? I'd be, I'd be interested to hear from our construction professionals here.
Well, John, you know, to Ralph, Commissioner Strelcheck's point.
Marty, we can't hear you.
Can you pull it up close? You are quiet. You're not Jack.
I don't have Jack's voice. Relative to.
Still closer.
Relative to Commissioner Strelcheck's comments and the concerns of the city is that they want to be able to provide the opportunity or a surface for someone from the city, like the building inspection, to come and view the site, right?
A fire truck.
Well, if you have a stone base, they can still get in there. They can still walk on that. I don't see any, any, you know, to your point, I, I don't see any point that, that much is gained by requiring that the, the, you know, the, what you're requesting to be installed if you have the stone base already.
Mr. Schaefer?
I'm not so concerned about the base. I'm just concerned about setting precedent with six homes. Once you get six, everybody's going to want that. And we had a really good reason for not allowing that. And I, I really think the city should stick to it.
Mr. Baca?
Yeah, Jack, you have mentioned several times regarding the economy and what other cities have gotten into trouble, whatever it might be. Is that your major reason?
Well, it's not my reason. This was, again, this was our process and our policy for years. And that was, I think that's, it's a conservative approach. That's, that's one of the, the reasons behind it, I believe. Again, you can have letters of credit, but they only cover so much. And we don't want to be in a situation, and it doesn't necessarily have to be a full, you know, recession or an issue. There could be an issue with the developer going under or something where without a final surface course on, you're, you're putting a burden on residents that are in there to have to cover that cost if, if the developer can't do it. So that was one of the, one of the reasons why I'm assuming when this was created, it was done well before I started working here. I think that's one. I think the other issue is access. I mean, yeah, there's gravel base, but in January and February, nobody's shoveling that gravel base or plowing it and it ice formed up and, you know, there are issues with access and there's, could be a concern with regard to getting fire safety issues, people there if somebody does have an accident on one of those, one of those lots. So I think those were all the reasons why they put this in place years ago. I mean, some communities, you can get final plat, the meeting after your preliminary plat without anything in. And it's just not been our policy.
Is that by ordinance or by policy?
That's by ordinance, I believe.
Can I ask a question, please? What, what is the difference with respect to access for inspections and fire protection, whether you have to go to two or six homes? It, it, it doesn't hold any water.
Four more lots, four more.
Four times the trips.
Four times the trips to go there, basically. And then as you go sequentially, it's further and further in off of the main road. This kind of shows, this is a better view of where it says industrial drive, but now it's Weston. So this is where they would be parking to get back there.
Jack, the, the lots are 38 feet wide. So four, four times 38, that's probably the, the width of a standard McQuinn lot.
Planning Commission, Mr. Baca?
It seems to me that, I mean, there's, there's some, there's some disconnect in, in this whole thing. It sounds like the staff did a, a great job of listening and made some adjustments. And then we're here and then there's some surprises that, you know, weren't worked out. And, you know, I, I, I just wonder, you know, what, what happened? Why does, why does it get, get to this point? So I don't know. It sounds, I, I've kind of agreed on the, on the precedent here that Mr. Schaefer said that unless they go back and try to work some of this out and bring it back to us in, in January, that, you know, we, we have what, what we have here as a recommendation for two.
Anyone else? Tell you what I think. I'm less concerned about the two and the six and I can certainly understand the benefit of the six. But I think I do agree that every developer will argue that more is better, that there is no harm to the city, that they are in a position to finish the deal and make it work. I'm very concerned about making exceptions on the fly. Little concerned about the last exception made unless we create an, an exception to the policy. I wasn't part of making that exception. It's why I created an ordinance subcommittee or a policy subcommittee so that we weren't doing everything by variance and we actually create policies. It seems to me that the six makes sense in this case, at least I haven't heard otherwise. But it also seems to me that if you're going to give them six, maybe based on the city's existing ordinance, there should be some additional financial security. I don't know, because that wasn't explored. No other options were given other than simply give us a variance. I don't, other than it's a good, it is a good idea and I don't want to stand in the way of a good idea. But I'm also not sure. I, I just am concerned that I get the impression that staff and the developer haven't worked through how the heck this is all going to happen on this site and we're going to have concerns with the development agreement later. It's another concern I have about passing this tonight. My inclination is to give the variance for the six and to at our next planning commission meeting to address the policy of whether it should be six or four and make a recommendation to the council. I mean, just going forward, under what circumstances, what security, what should the city have? What are the bases for exceptions? As opposed to simply, we give a variance because we shoot from the hip and we think one development, it's a good reason and another development, it's not a good reason. A good reason is in the eye of the beholder and, and, you know, in, in both cases, I can see a hardship in not allowing the six. I also see why communities, because frankly, I had, I'm familiar with a number of communities that were left holding the bag on developments that weren't finished. Not suggesting Mr. Zabchak's going to do that, but the next guy who comes in front of us is going to say he's not going to do it either. I know Mr. Zabchak won't. At least I believe that's the case. So I think we ought to have a policy discussion about this. I think we're delving too much in a policy discussion now without any sort of parameter. And, and frankly, staff didn't really lay this issue out for us. Not saying they necessarily needed to, neither did the applicant, other than coming in and, and making an argument and here's, here are the pros and the cons. It, it just bothers me. And while I would ordinarily say if this was June, I would say we need to do something tonight because frankly, that's a hardship on a builder, but it's December. And, you know, whether this occurs in December or January, I don't think is going to affect your development as long as it occurs. But I also think we ought to know what, we ought to understand our policies. We ought to make sure we're consistent with them or we ought to have a policy for the circumstances under which we give a variance. And then do we need to do something to mitigate whatever risk there is to the city? So I, I'm in favor of the six, but I won't vote for it if we vote tonight. Hold on, Mr. Strelcheck.
Just if we do come forward with a policy discussion, if, I would like to request that we talk about the city as a whole, as one umbrella of a policy and then, then town center, which I view as a different animal, which is the point that I've argued tonight. I'm not arguing on behalf of the developer tonight. I'm arguing on behalf of the town center zoning. So again, I'd like to review what opportunities are within town center because I think some pretty clear arguments were made and I think if other developments would come forward within the town center zoning area for something similar, again, I would be supportive of that moving forward. I wouldn't vote for this many houses on this few and small lots anywhere else in the city. But here it's appropriate and I like the fact that there's ownership here and I'd like to do something from a policy standpoint where we encourage ownership in all of the districts within our city, town center included. And this is the only place that I'm seeing that is going to be owned by something other than a developer. And I'm full-heartedly behind that premise. So I'd like to encourage what we can to make sure people can get in and it's reasonable and the development can be built in a manner in which maybe the houses can be a little less expensive or there's some economies of scale being that they're so close together versus anywhere else in the city.
Anybody else? Does anybody want to make a motion?
You're not going to vote for it tonight?
Well, I don't have to vote for it.
Sounds like the motion should be that this should be tabled.
That's what I'm thinking. Motion to table.
Table in a second. The motion in table, in a second, that's a non-debatable motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It's tabled. Hopefully, we can resolve this in January and staff will review this more carefully. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the ICAP development. It's a consultation for a proposed credit union at 10945 North Port Washington Road. If the applicant wants to step forward. How do I zoom out on this thing? Good evening. Welcome. I'm Jared Protaske with ICAP Development.
And I'm Abby Sevright from La Macia Group, the architecture firm.
Thank you. Staff, if you could start the discussion.
Sure. The applicant's here for a consultation for a financial institution on the, the property that was recently rezoned to a PUD. Typically with the consultation, we won't see this level of detail with the plans, but they were not allowed to come forward yet with a building and site plan approval because there's, we're working out some issues with the land division. There's two separate lots that have to be divided and then re-divided again. So that's going to take a few months to work out. The applicant wanted to get some feedback from the commission in the meantime with regard to not only the site layout, but the architecture as well. So I guess I'll first just kind of talk a little bit about the site. In front of you, you have the site plan. It shows the financial institution in the center of the site. As you may recall from our PUD master overall concept plan, there's an access point coming in off of Port Washington here. And then there'll be access to the rear. This would feed a separate site below. So this, the overall concept is, is similar to what we approved as part of the PUD concept plan. This now has a little bit more detail. So we're just, we'll just give you some, just kind of things that we saw in terms of what to maybe flush out over the next few months with regard to final design as we move this project forward. One of the issues that staff looked at was in terms of parking. The site is actually overparked for a financial institution in terms of square footage. We don't have employee numbers at this point, but there's a fairly large number of spaces available based on the square footage and what we assume would be the number of employees. So that's one of the things we'll have to kind of work out with the applicant, determine what that, that number count is and, and verify whether we have too much parking on the site or not. The other issue is that the, the applicant is showing a 10-foot stall width for the development on, on these less intense type uses. We typically allow them to go down to nine feet. So that may help again with a reduction of, of impervious area and, and help the green space ratio. If there, there was going to be any change to the number of parking spaces, I guess staff would be, the, the six that are kind of along the back end here, we feel that may, could be modified. They're, they're angle parking on a one-way and, and some of these are getting kind of tight to the, the teller area. So if there was a reduction, we would recommend those be reduced in size or, or eliminated if need be. Since this was a PUD, the green space ratio has to be meant for the entire site. So it doesn't necessarily have to be meant on this site, but any reduction in the requirement will have to be made up on another site. So it's, it's best for the developer to try to at least come closest possible so he doesn't have a major deficiency to make up on the, on the final development of the, the entire project. So, I mean, other than that overall, I think we're, we're supportive of the, the plan itself. It has, it meets the stacking requirements for the drive-through. It meets the setbacks, except for the side yards where we're abutting the, the shared driveway. It meets the, the front setbacks, the, the rear setbacks, all that's all in compliance from the code from what we can tell. So we don't have any other major concerns with the layout. I think there was a discussion a little bit in the staff report with regard to this turning radius in the corner, that this should maybe be a, a full radius here instead of this little bump out there. But those are relatively minor details we can work out. In terms of architecture, I actually, there was renderings in the packet, but I thought the pictures actually did a lot better job kind of showing what the development looked like. We have a couple of different pictures, which I'll kind of go through. Some were submitted by the applicant, some we actually took ourselves. This was a, a recently completed one in Brookfield, which is very similar, I believe, to what we're looking at here. And then this is some of the photos that the applicant shared with us from the interior space as well. I believe this is Greenfield, is that correct? Oh, Muskigo, Muskigo. This is similar again, the, the one difference with this one, they have these metal bands across here. Those were eliminated from the proposal. This kind of just, I think, gives you a little bit better idea of the articulation of the building and then the materials than the rendering, renderings do. And then this is a, a site from the rear. Again, overall, I think staff feels the, the, the building design is, is, is nice. One of the things that we talked about, maybe that could be changed a little bit is the, you know, this portion of the building, there, there's no window area here from, based on the floor plan that submitted, these are offices as well. So we felt maybe that there'd be an opportunity for additional windows in here and maybe that a sign that's a little bit smaller in size. The other. The other thing that we discussed in the report a little bit is that, if you look at, I'll get, try to zoom in a little bit. So there's basically some cedar-wrapped posts in the front of the building, but the soffit and fascia of the building, as well as the drive-through, is an aluminum product. We felt maybe that if that was maybe a cedar product to kind of complement the post, that may look a little bit nicer in terms of the design. And then the other issue is, while the other building did show the, basically, the bars across for a screening, they chose not to do that at this location, but they did make, mention to us that there will be some sort of shading or other screening device on that front facade. So, we just asked when they come back for their final building and site plan approval, that we understand what that is and what that's going to look like from the exterior. We've had a lot of debate recently with regard to covering above windows and being an east elevation that's fairly large, we assume that there's going to be, want to be some covering to that. So we kind of want to get a feel for what that's going to look like once the building is constructed. One other issue that was talked about in the report that they are proposing is, they are showing, let's see if any of these had, they're showing a electronic message sign as part of their proposal. And our next item on the agenda, we'll be kind of discussing that, but that would not be allowed based on our current requirements. They're only allowed in certain uses, and financial institutions are not one. They have the right to ask for the waiver, but the mayor asked that we put on a, an item to discuss these in general, to see if there's any desire by the commission to make any changes to that ordinance to allow these types of, or any types of commercial uses to have electronic message boards. So, we can talk about that at the next item, but I just wanted to draw your attention to it as part of this proposal. So again, this is a consultation, there's no action being taken by the commission, it's just to get your feedback in terms of what you feel about the, again, the site and the building and architecture. And then, when they're ready to come back, once the CSM issues have been resolved, we'll have them in front of the commission again at a later meeting, my guess probably in February or March, probably.
We don't care anything.
Yeah, I guess, I'll leave this a little bit to Abby to talk about the architecture of the building and walk through it. As the developer here, you know, we're in a, in a purchase agreement right now with the financial institution. So this would not be our project, it would be a part of the greater development, but certainly here in support of the project and moving forward with it. And to Jack's point, it is a consultation, the CSM issues that came up with us, and delayed this from being a full hearing in front of you today, and to the work that Abby has done to this point with her client, you know, I guess we ask to get as much constructive feedback from you today as possible, such that when we do come in here with our ducks in a row with the CSM, that hopefully there's not new surprises that are presented from comments you may all have in regards to this, and give, give the design team the appropriate amount of time now to continue to work forward, knowing that there will still be a final approval in the future. But, any comments that you may have, we would, we would love to hear them.
Mr. Chorin.
With regards to the site plan, I'm assuming on the backside, where you've got the drive-through and the one-way, and it's being fed by two-way parking, two-way traffic, that you're going to have some signage to control that. And I'm not quite sure how you'd do it otherwise.
So, typically, we would have pavement marking that could say, "Do not enter," and also like a hacked pattern, and then also signage on posts that would say, "Do not enter" for the two-way traffic at the south.
Right. And then with regards to the building design, I disagree with Jack with regards to adding those windows where those offices are, I kind of like that, that block element there. It almost appears as though, different, and has this, almost like a sign, a block for a sign, but I wonder whether the glass height might be able to drop a little bit. And you do face east, so you might want to consider something like sunscreens and, you know, some horizontal elements to, to block the, the light penetration that's going to be coming in there, but it's a good-looking building.
Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer.
I would agree with Jack that I think we can reduce the number of parking spaces, and they could be narrowed to nine feet, which would give you more green space, which always adds to the beauty of the area. In regard to the building itself, in regard to the windows, in the picture you had on the screen, the landmark commission, the landmark crediting sign was higher.
Can you play your microphone over to him, please?
The landmark sign was higher, which would have left room for windows in the building with the beige brick. And this one I'm looking at, that I took out of the packet with the redder brick at sundown, the landmark sign is lower, which kind of precludes the use of windows. So I don't really have a strong feeling one way or the other. If you have the sign up, then I'd like to see more windows. In regard to the cedar columns, I don't mind the cedar columns, and I don't mind the aluminum fascia. I don't like the difference between them, so I would like to see either wood on that fascia or cover the columns with a different material. I think the columns look rustic and the fascia looks very contemporary, and I don't like that, that look. Other than that, I think it's a fine building.
Mr. Baca.
Yeah, so there's parking in the front of the building?
Correct.
What is the setback from Port Washington Road to the building?
I believe it's 90 feet from the, from the building front to the, to the property line. I believe it's 90 feet is what the requirement is, and parking, I think, is 25 feet.
Yeah, the parking setback is 25 feet. And then typically, our code requires it to be 90 feet, because when you add in the double parking in the drive aisle, mathematically, it always works out to be right around.
So 90 feet, right?
Yeah. 90, 95, I believe.
Mr. Strelcek.
I'm supportive of the architecture. I would agree with Commissioner Chorin that I wouldn't prefer to see extra windows on the side. I think what we've got kind of a trend going in the city of McQuan and kind of with architecture right now, is that people are building these big glass boxes, and then they realize that the east and west sun in McQuan is pretty hefty, and then they want to screen it after the fact. I think those offices would be, you know, have blinds, and the blinds would be closed most of the time, so I just don't know that the, the windows there would really pay off as far as a use standpoint. And then I think that sign actually being lower on that wall versus higher lends itself better to not only more visibility with a logistically correct sign size. I think it makes it stand out a little bit better, but I think it also is a really nice kind of design element. I'm supportive of 10-foot-wide parking stalls, I drive a truck, and they're a lot easier to get into. But, you know, I am going to caution the developer that, you know, as we look at the site as a whole, as you build these out, one, two, three, four, five, you know, different places, or however many you're going to come forward with, I really don't want to get in a hardship discussion on the last slot that, you know, you're not going to meet your green space, and then you got this really great opportunity for you, and you can't build it because of the green space ratio. So, really kind of focus on that 40%, work with staff to make sure that you hit that 40%. I don't think, I don't think a bank needs a variance on a green space ratio. I think they, you know, just due to the traffic patterns and how many people are actually sitting in the institution at one time, the parking could be a little bit less, you know, perhaps per staff recommendation. The electronic sign, obviously, we'll discuss next, you know, as a, as a conversation item. You know, again, I wouldn't support it at a, at a banking facility currently. I'm going to wait to hear what fellow commissioners have to say, and also what staff does, but again, that would be kind of a no-go from a signage standpoint. And then, you know, as you're putting glass and taller elements higher within the building, just keep in mind that advertising would not be allowed at that height. We didn't allow that for one bank already north of you. Again, we would follow precedent on that, not allow that for this facility as well.
It's actually frosted glass at the highest here, so there's no intent to do any sort of advertising above.
I'm thrilled. Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I'll give my comments, but apparently I'm in a distinct minority in that I, I think that the main part of the building for modern architecture looks okay, and I'm, but I think that the, the office space to the left looks like a shoebox appended to it, and there's no detail, you know, it looks like it's simply a, an aluminum cap on the top with no, no roof trim, riffline trim. I think it would look better with windows or some sort of fenestration, rather than just a, a plain front flat wall. I, I don't find it, that part of the building to be particularly attractive. It may be functional.
You're just wrong.
What? Well, I maybe. But I think at least some roof detail, something. You know, you put the minimum roof detail on that you possibly can and call that architecture. I'm not sure that, you know, and in the past, we've required, even as recently as five or six years ago, buildings that came forward had at least some detail along the riffline. I, you know, the windows, I think it'd look better with windows, maybe I'm wrong. I at least like the two bands that are coming across.
Those look nice.
And I would prefer to see a, more of a darker earth-toned brick than that ugly, what I thought was rather homely-looking yellow brick that was on one of the pictures, but...
Yeah, I didn't like that either.
I mean, that's...
These are the actual bricks that will be used.
Which is?
All of the images that you see. So perhaps the rendering didn't represent the brick well, but the brick that was used at these two facilities will be used at this McQuan, proposed one as well.
So it's kind of a light beige brick?
Yeah, yeah.
I would agree with the mayor, I don't care for that.
Neither do I, but I guess I am the mayor. So anyhow, those are my comments. I welcome a credit union. I think it's a nice use for the property. I think the side of the building, the, the drive-through looks nice, the, but I just don't like the, the front view of the shoebox that's appended onto the glass building. Any other comments?
Is this right across from the pavilion where that vein center is? Is that, I'm just trying to figure out where this...
This will be across from the pavilion, yes, in the, on the vacant parcel, probably a little bit...
South of that, okay. Close to that.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much. We look forward to hearing from you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a sign code discussion. That's not specifically about this property, but again, I'd rather have us discuss policies rather than do one-off variances and then wonder why, you know, we give one and everybody else wants it. So we ought to decide, because I can't imagine why, for anybody, there is a hardship. The question is whether we like the concept. I may differ with Alderman Strelcek here. I think when they're done well, and when they're not moving and flashing and, and all those things, I don't have a problem with electronic signs. They simply are somewhat more flexible than a regular sign, as long as they're not light shows. And the question is what they're used for. I think the places we have them are fine. I think they would make sense at restaurants, I think they would make, would have made sense years ago at the movie theater, rather than the changeable letter signs, which, sign, which is what they asked for at the time, and our policy didn't allow it. And at the time, we didn't just give variances because somebody asked for it. So, Mr. Isader.
Yeah, basically, I had a copy of the ordinance in your packet to show you what uses are allowed. Basically, it's, it's mostly public service and churches where they're allowed, and what, and it's what we see. I do have some photos up on the screen to show the three or four of the ones that we have. I believe there's maybe five total, I didn't get a picture of Christ Church, but this shows Trinity Church up on Freistadt, they have a electronic message board that's relatively new. Then you have, our, our library has a message board, and then Homestead High School has their message board, and then the final is the, here it is, the gateway sign. So, the other requirements that we've put in place was the, the switching out of the message every 30 seconds, and not having any flashing, blinking, or any type of animation. I think, from what I've seen, all of the signage has been in compliance with that. I did notice one of them was changing probably less than 30 seconds, we just gave a friendly reminder of what the code requirements are. And then there's a, a certain size requirement that's allowed in terms of the message sign versus the overall signage. So, again, either for the, the credit union, they would either need to have a signed waiver that we would approve through a somewhat of a hardship issue, or we would look at changing the policy to allow other uses. Now, I don't think we would just open it up to financial institutions, we'd probably have to open it up to mostly all commercial uses at that point. We could look at make, maybe allowing for a smaller screen sizes in proportion versus the churches and other community signs, because there probably doesn't need to be as large as a message on there. I think, I wouldn't really look at changing any of the other requirements, I think it's done a good job of keeping it very low light, very, you know, less, less animation. I know I've noticed a few, I think even on the freeway, I think Nicolay High School's got one that's, has a lot of flashing and animation on it from the freeway, you can see it's pretty bright. So I think, I think the, the requirements we have in place right now have done a good job of controlling that, that light, light issue. So, I guess we'll leave it up to the commission to give us some direction. If you feel that there's a change needed, we can, we can work on drafting amendment to the sign code. If not, we'll, we'll keep it as is, and we'll let the applicant that was just here know that their chances of getting approval are probably not that great if we don't make a change, so.
Mr. Bach.
You know, I kind of like signs that stand the test of time, if there are such things. And you kind of drive around the city, or even in Thienville, and you look at signs, and some have been around since the 70s or 80s, and they're falling apart. And the problem with these, at least in my point with these digital signs, is that the technology changes so fast. I mean, you look at the TVs, every two years, you have something new. So, how do you ensure that you're not going to get stuck with a sign that has old digital technology that just sits around forever and ever as new kind of signs and new technology comes along? So when you approve something that's digital, is it going to be the same thing, and bulbs are going to go out and all that, and you're kind of stuck with a, with a sign that's got problems and just is unsightly? So, I mean, that's my, I think my biggest problem with the electronic signs, other than all the other animations and flashing things, which, you know, I obviously don't like.
Mr. Baca.
You know, I, I agree with Mr. Bach in the sense that a lot of thought went into this policy with respect to public as well as churches. I don't see how you could control signage for either retail or commercial. I think you would have, every single applicant, you would have to deal with it on an individual basis. I don't know how you'd write policy.
Well, I think the policy would be as is, we would just open it up, and then you could get a lot more requests for it. I mean, I think what's controlled it somewhat up to this point was cost. It was, it was very costly for these types of signs, and now I think that's coming down, so it's probably going to be easier. But you're right, if we do allow it to open, every commercial, you know, space that's allowed a, a freestanding sign may, may choose to have one, we would still have the same requirements in place, but yeah, there could be a proliferation of them.
Right. Couldn't we add a, a maintenance requirement?
Sure, that'd have to be in, in good operating order and have to be maintained, and if not, then it would have to be, but I, you know, I could see even the older ones that work may not still look some, you know, like an old TV, it still works, it just isn't as nice of a picture.
Don't we have the same problem with the, the other signs that are sitting on the side?
Yeah, the changeable ones where people are using them, different numbers and letters and intertwined and things like that.
Or just standard signs that sit there. Some of them aren't, don't look good because they've gotten old.
Part of it is too, I mean, it's so easy to find information these days. If you want to find what movie's going on, everybody's got a phone, you can go on the phone and you can look up stuff. So what kind of information are you sharing that you can't find in 16 other different ways, you know, by Googling it quickly? I mean, that's, how do you control that? Everybody's going to want to put whatever information they want up there, but a lot of it you can find in so many other places today, the movie theaters, you know, I'm, I'm not sure even if you...
You know, I'm, I'm not sure even if you need to roll the different movies because you can go to Marcus Theaters and find the movies that you're going to watch.
Well, they don't roll them, they have them all listed on the board.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Chor.
Yeah.
Well, the, 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 the examples that you showed us, basically give information with regards to temperature, time, time of service. I'm a little concerned that you open it up to retail and it's like, you know, for a bank, you know, it, it becomes an advertisement.
Oh, definitely it will be and, and we don't really have the ability to regulate the content of it.
Uh, Mr. Strelcheck?
You know, my point on this is, you know, A, I don't really see the need. I mean, every retailer out there is going to wish that they got their name out there in a, in a different way and the sign is going to be the hot ticket today. But even the existing signs aren't in compliance, our city sign's not in compliance as of this morning. We weren't allowing blue lettering, we have blue lettering on our city sign. We've kind of looked another way on that. Um, and as you-
Where, where does it prohibit that? It says the black background has to be black, the message is not limited by color.
When that sign was approved, it was Auburn colored lettering only.
Oh.
No deviation from the color. And there was a ton of discussion on council, like the time and review, and we had to review it at six months and a year to see how it was working and if we had complaints and what was the traffic concern and all this other stuff. And now you're going to open it up to a re, a retailer who isn't going to invest as much time into understanding the sign code, or they're going to get a turnover on staff and have a different manager in place. And then they're going to change the sign and, you know, you're going to have somebody, you know, really kind of new and exciting and innovative that's going to come forward and they're going to change the use of the sign and then the city's going to be chasing after this. I think where our policy sits currently is really where it's needed. You know, it's, it's people that need to have information out there for the public and religious institutions are for the public. Um, the movie theater serves the entire public. You know, it's a destination place that if you don't know what movies are showing as you drive by, um, you know, just a quick change of the electronic sign there is, is reasonable. The community signs at the high school is an appropriate place for it. It's for the public, it's for the student body. The city signs are for community events. They're really designed for the public. Now you're going to take this and open this up to private entities where the person that it really benefits is the business owner themselves and some of the public. I mean, there's arguments to say that everyone drives by and has an equal opportunity, but the school is generally for the public, the city is generally for the public, religious institution is for the public. So as we look at this, I think, you know, it, it's a bit of a challenge. And I think you're going to also struggle with sign size and location and, you know, just again, keeping up with technology, as you said. I mean, you, you come up with one LED restriction now, then two years from now, the LEDs are completely different and you can have, you know, full graphic sign that's completely off the charts.
Oh, you already can. Some communities have them.
Yeah, I know, they're all, they're distracting.
Well, my, my view is not for banks because I'm not really sure even what a thing to do. Our CD rate is 1.65%. Um, I, I, I could see, and where I, part of the reason why I wanted to have this discussed, at the time we did it, we discussed allowing restaurants also and the theater. We didn't approve either one of those. Um, I could see a benefit both from the theater rather than the signage that's out there now. But again, static, not, some, you go on some towns, they have movies on them, um, if they were to ever replace their sign. And I could see it for restaurants and in part because we want to encourage our restaurants in town. And it's simply, you know, to have the nightly special, which isn't something you, I mean, people see when they drive by. And it might replace some of the sandwich boards, which we currently allow, which are, I think tend to be less attractive, um, than a stationary solid, uh, message board. So that was my view on it.
Just to clarify, those theaters do, are allowed to have that.
Is now?
Yes, that was, and a lot of that was because they were allowed to have the changeable ones previously.
Oh.
They, they approached us for the electronic before we made the change and then they just swapped out and put a new changeable letter one in.
Okay, because I remember originally we said, no, I didn't, I didn't even know that they had it currently, okay. But I, but I could see restaurants, um, and, and, um, you know, I think that that provides a 21st century opportunity, just like restaurants used to all have their menus in the window. Now we have sandwich boards, which frankly, I don't think look all that great. Um, but an opportunity for people to say what their special is, I think that helps the restaurant business. And that's why, part of the reason why I wanted this before us, but secondly, I don't really see a good argument for a bank other than, you know, changing slogans or putting witty expressions outside, which frankly, often looks a little cheesy and looks more like a mall or a, or Blue Mountain Road. Um, so that, that was my view, but maybe nobody else agrees on the restaurants. Ms. Schaefer?
I go, I was going to mention the same thing about theaters, Jack, on the page, it's 119 in our packet, but it's, that has the table.
Page 119?
Well, I can just speak to it, there's not that many people. The theater is listed as permitted as long as it's in industrial and zoning, is that right? But it's not permitted if the theater is in residential zone?
Right, yeah, we don't allow, if there's a, they're, if they're in a residential area, they're not allowed to have it.
Would be a family anyway.
Yeah, yeah. And that was for an existing use somewhere that just-
Somehow it had to be written down.
Was in a resident, like in a residential area, you don't want to have the lights shining and-
Could have been something applicable, but, uh, because we're not going to put a theater in our-
Yeah, it must have been something that, it doesn't matter, it doesn't make sense. But to your point, Mayor, about the restaurants, I would not have thought of that. My gut reaction was no, but are you thinking it wouldn't be a necessary, I shouldn't say it wouldn't be. Are you envisioning and alone sign or more something that hangs in the window where it's sort of like a-
Part of their existing monument sign.
On the monument, okay.
Which is what the other-
Yeah, same, similar to the other ones.
Not that they get a new sign or some hanging flapping thing.
I just think there's not that many restaurants that have monuments.
Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the older ones are so close to the, the right of way that there's not a lot of room for them and, and some of the new ones, like Calder, they, they don't have one. Um, even the, the new, um, brewery doesn't have one at this point. Um, I mean, there's, there may be a couple here and there, but for the most part, I'd, I would agree that-
Range Line has one.
Chuck's place?
And not in Mequon. But Range Line has one.
Yeah, Range Line, I think Ferrante's has one.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The Burger Place has one.
Are gas stations allowed?
Gas stations are only allowed to have their numbers.
Okay. That's because I, I remember seeing at the mobile station or something.
Those can change daily.
Or built into the wall sign. As long as it's built in as part of the design. See, that's where I, I could see restaurant, be allowing restaurants to have, because I think there is a benefit to the consumer in specials. But, I don't know, no?
Private and public recreational areas, facilities?
Like parks?
Yeah, restaurant, restaurants aren't really specifically noted.
Well, they're not. Doesn't mean we couldn't add them. Could they be added?
Uh, I believe so. I guess I would have to maybe double check with our attorneys just to make sure we're not, um, singling out one commercial use versus another. I think the way we have it written now, it's kind of-
Can, when you zone, you can, there's a million ways we distinguish between commercial uses. Uh, what, what's the basis for the bank's request?
Uh, just again, to promote, you know, interest rate specials or their, their mortgage rates, things like that.
Didn't notice that sign on any of their pictures that they provided though. Maybe it just wasn't included in their pictures.
Yeah, I don't know if they have them out there or not, uh, they-
They debut it in Mequon.
So I guess I'm just, him hearing probably for the most part, keep it the same for now at this point.
Does anybody else agree with restaurants?
I kind of agree with the restaurants.
I'd want to see what it looks like.
Yeah, as long as it was in the monument sign and not something-
As long as it doesn't get overdone like they have the prime rib special and the fish fry special.
No, it's one line, it's one line, you know, Fish Fry Friday.
It's a blue plate special.
Lobster special on Wednesday.
They all got Fish Fry Friday, they don't need a sign.
Okay.
It's just a given, you don't get a sign for that.
John, I think the issue that you have with the restaurants is as what Jack said, you're discriminating, okay? Restaurants only? What about something else? What about something else? Whatever it might be.
Every country club will have two.
We make distinctions between uses all the time. I mean, where restaurant, what zoning category a restaurant is allowed in, the fact that we allow public buildings or churches to have them and not, I mean, we, we picked individual uses.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I don't, I'm not an attorney, so I'm not going to, I just, you know, just be concerned of, uh, if there's a speech issue or, you know, freedom of speech issue in terms of dictating which types of commercial uses can and cannot have them. I, it may be fine, I would just still double check with them, but-
I think our uses are nonprofit.
That's what I was going to say, except for theaters.
Except for theaters.
The other four.
And gas stations are required by law to have numbers on them.
Yeah, and that's a different animal to me.
In, in the, uh, the, uh, credit union packet, they have a proposed sign where the, the electronic sign, premium checking, earn five percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I don't think we want that.
I agree.
The thing is, when we have 14 or 15 banks within two miles, we start with that one and then you're going to have everybody wanting to do it. It'll turn into Vegas.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm not a proponent for the banks because I don't see a-
How many banks through Allenport Road?
We have 17 in town, right? I think every one almost.
We're not approving one, we're approving 17.
I think we almost have every one, but we do have a couple more proposals coming. You'll see, you might see shortly, which, surprised that we don't have them all, but there's at least one or two out there.
Port Washington Road.
Well, it doesn't sound like there's any appetite for a change and you have a direction that there's not any appetite for a variance, so.
Understood. We'll pass that along.
Next item, policy subcommittee update. Some of us know, some of us don't.
Uh, we just wanted to provide you with an update of the work that the subcommittee's been doing since August. Um, the first meeting was really a kickoff meeting to talk about what our prioritization was and, um, there was a great deal of consensus that we focus on the Port Washington Road, um, corridor, uh, basically its entirety. Um, we have started with some baseline information for our, um, policy subcommittee members for the area of Port Washington Road from Highland to Pioneer, just better understanding what some of the site conditions are, what some of the properties are that would likely be, um, ripe for, for development, um, talking about sewer and water, cost estimates of such. Um, we've had, um, regular meetings once a month. We've had a fair amount of property owners within that study area present at our meeting. Um, and, uh, the last couple of meetings were really used to prep for and then, um, kind of have a debriefing on an open house that was held a week ago Thursday, so November 21st. It was attended by about 150 people and we ran the public members through a mapping exercise. So there was 20 tables set up, um, all throughout, um, City Hall, at least on this side of City Hall, both upstairs, basement, lunchroom, north conference room. Um, and for the most part, there was a lot of collaboration and a lot of good conversation among property owners. Um, I thank all of our, um, planning commissioners who were present because they helped orchestrate the meeting, helped keep us on task and time, um, and just, you know, answer questions and provide support to the groups. Um, so after that meeting, we did a little bit of a debriefing and just really identified very high level consensus areas, but we did not formulate any, you know, formal recommendations or opinions at this point. We're going to shift our efforts towards, um, the rest of the Port Washington Road corridor from county line up to Highland, kind of do a similar deep dive and analysis of that area, conduct a few more focus groups, and then we'll kind of take a step back and look at the corridor at a whole. But we plan to look at everything from zoning, new zoning districts, types of uses, building, site design, um, you know, look at height requirements, building materials, um, infill development versus greenfield development.
Streetscaping.
Streetscaping, uh, maybe gateway, um, so really the whole gamut. Um, I did share a draft project timeline with the group, um, that, you know, assuming we're only meeting once a month, um, gets us towards probably making some recommendations, um, in late summer to both the planning commission and the common council for some action. There's a lot of work to do, um, and we would plan to come back to both the planning commission and the common council to provide some periodic updates so that we're getting an understanding from the decision makers and the policy elected officials as to, you know, where they want us to, you know, tweak possibly some things. Um, we are presenting to the common council next week, I mean, no, I shouldn't say presenting, we're just giving, uh, the similar debriefing and making sure they understand the work that we're, um, taking into consideration as well. Um, Jack has up a, a sewer map, um, that, that was part of one of our meetings. We had, um, Kristen Lundin and Kevin Driscoll, um, both part of the public works department come and talk to us about infrastructure. Um, two areas within the Port Washington Road corridor, south of Mequon Road are in Tiff District. There's one Tiff District, um, where the ICAP project is located, um, that, you know, when you take a look at that site being developed and the type of work that the pavilion is doing, we start to become really limited on other potential sites to be developed in that Tiff area. So we're going to talk about some strategies with that Tiff District. Um, it is performing well, it would, it would financially close on the positive at this time. Um, I think the other Tiff District further south, there'll be a little bit more, I think, analysis and in-depth look at it because there's probably more, more properties in that district that we would want to encourage redevelopment, encourage consolidation of properties if and when we can, um, and, you know, maybe be more proactive in making sure property owners and developers understand that there's an incentive available should there be interest in those properties. Mayor, other planning commissioners, if you'd like to add anything else about the work that we've been doing?
All I would add is for those of you who are not on the subcommittee, you are more than welcome either to be on it or certainly to attend and participate and provide input. Um, it's been interesting so far. I, I don't know if you mentioned, maybe I was, my wife was wandering. You know, one of the concerns in the, the, uh, north of Highland Road is not only the sewer issues, but also road issues. That with the addition of I, the I-43, uh, ramp interchange that, um, appears to be almost certain that the state is going to install, um, and, and the, the city committed to five years ago, as part of that commitment, the city committed to the county that for the next, from 10 years from construction of that ramp, the city would not ask the county to participate in any expansion of Port Washington Road, which would lead the entire cost, uh, put it on the city's shoulders, which would be extraordinarily expensive. And for reasons, other reasons I'm not in favor of, uh, intense development up there, but that's a, another reason to be hesitant about what kind of development we ultimately allow north of Highland Road. Yes?
Why was that agree, what was that agreement based on between the city and the county?
The ci, the county agreed to contribute part of a significant amount of the city's share to the Highland Road interchange.
You didn't ask for more, yeah.
What?
As long as the state didn't ask for more.
But it says you can't ask, we will not participate for 10 years from the construction of that for the expansion of Port Washington Road.
And it's 10 years, um, after the construction is complete.
Right. But so it's probably 13 years, 14 years from now.
And cost of sewer, sewer in particular is very high.
But we've also discussed other onsite system options for both residential and commercial, if there is to be commercial development and what those options are, both legally and, um, we've also discussed what our code says and some policy issues that would have to be involved in, in that.
What's the timeframe on that? What's the proposed timeframe on that interchange?
On the interchange? Um, last I checked with public works director Lundin, which was probably three or four weeks ago, she has not heard yet either or have been informed.
I mean, is that- Except it's not the next two years. The, the biennium budget has all the planning in it and some of, and some of the initial construction. So, and from everything the state told us when we met with them, and I was part of that meeting, this would not be one of the first things they do, so, um, but once, they believe that they're going ahead, that at this point, um, based on the work they're doing and about to do, they'd be more than a little bit- they're doing and about to do, they'd be more than a little bit pregnant as opposed to where they were when they stopped five or six years ago. And therefore it will be, you know, there's a point beyond which they're full steam ahead. And they're pushing. They just came back to us, for example, and told the city to pound sand on our request to waive the full interchange on County Line Road.
Right.
Because they're already making decisions that they are from the US DOT, but they have a fairly compressed timeframe apparently for their planning. The state, that's still a long period of time.
Two years, major election cycle that's happening, I don't know, an impact? If their budgets were to change or priorities were to change?
Yeah, but they believe that they will be far enough along in the process that-
It wouldn't be aborted at that point.
Yeah. Might be, it might stretch out longer, but that it is their highest priority road construction project at this, and also the governor's not going to change in the next two years whether or not people like that. Mr. Strochek?
When we did Central Growth, remember the sewer, and we did the sewer build out and sewer was going to be mainly funded by the development that was there, but there were a couple infill properties that got assessed because they had access to it or they wouldn't have access to it if they didn't do the assessment. So as we're looking at East Growth and we're looking at the sewer in that area, I guess I'd just bring forward a little extra caution to staff that like, if we would extend sewer further north, that we take into understanding like how it's going to get paid for, who's going to pay for it. And I really just don't want to see, you know, people with acreage and a house that are going to, that would have the opportunity to develop sometime in the future, have this pretty sizable assessment on their property. There's one little lady that was off of 76th Street that just, I felt horrible voting in favor of the assessment. It was, it was the right thing to do from what we agreed to, but it didn't, didn't feel good as a vote and I just, I wouldn't want to see anyone worry about having to leave their house due to an assessment, you know, moving forward. And that was one thing that, you know, we had people coming forward with concern on that last round.
We spent a great, a great deal of time with property owners in Central Growth and we have already in the previous study of this area and I have met one-on-one with property owners over the last month, probably a little bit more than halfway through. But those meetings in Central Growth, not only do we meet one-on-one about zoning, but then when we had infrastructure decisions to make, we brought them back in and did a second round of one-on-one meetings so that they understood what, if any, financial impacts there were to them depending on the decision-making by the council and made sure we informed them of where within the process they had opportunities to engage and voice their opinions.
And we're not going to make recommendations for sewer if we do at all, and that certainly hasn't been a decision that's been made. But if we do, that will be something we further explore before we make any sort of decisions.
Yeah, and I think there would then be specific updates to the Planning Commission and Common Council so that there's way in on what, if, you know, if there's, if there's consideration to expand, what is the financial, you know, planning and policy discussion associated with that.
Anybody else? If not, there's one motion that's in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Have a motion and second all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.